The council here, we'd like to thank you and welcome you and ask you to please stand. Reverend William will lead us in indication. Remain standing for our pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, who with unsleeping concern does watch over thy people. We thank thee for thy tender care, for every gift of grace bestowed upon us, for the dark and for the light, for winter, even when we grow weary of it, for work and rest, for peace, with freedom, for stimulus to toil for ourselves, for loved ones, and for strength, skill, and integrity of good men and women in business and industry, for the inventive genius of scientists, to human well-being, for governments dedicated to equal justice and liberty for all citizens. Bless this our mayor and council, this workforce, all elected officials, the poor, the bereaved, the sick. Bless our state, our president, our governor, our nation and all nations. This we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna ask that clerk, if she'd have a real call for us. Here?
Mayor President Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Ginn.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
We're all here, minutes of our work session and regular meeting on Monday, October 1st, 12?
Move to adopt?
Seven.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections or additions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying aye. Minutes are approved. Public comment period. If there's anyone who would like to take up to three minutes to speak to us on the subject of your choosing, you are free to do that now. Yes, sir. Would you give us your name, when you come up, just give us your name and meal and address.
Christopher Jones, 311 North James Street, Goldsboro. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Goldsboro Police Department for helping me complete my neighborhood cleanup senior project. In particular, I would like to thank Police Chief John Stewart and Officer Habermas. Their support, guidance, and counseling has helped me tremendously. I appreciate their time and dedication. Although we still have a few things to work on, I have seen an exceptional change in my neighborhood in just six months. Thank you again.
Thank you. And should the police department thank you? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we will move on to the other.
Yeah, I think.
Yes, ma'am. If you would come and give us, you are on the agenda, I think, but that's okay. I was, I was gonna get you. The prayer vigil?
Yes.
You are with the prayer vigil right now? Okay, we will hear you now.
Good evening.
To you. My name is Debra Coniggy. I'm the pastor of Praise, Prayer, Worship, and Revival Center. On next month, we're going to have a prayer vigil, prayer, we call it a prayer revival for the, and, and I don't want it to be just for churches, I want it to be citywide wherein we promote, we are against, trying to work against the crime that has taken over in our cities, our communities, and our streets. And it's gonna be prayer each night, which was stored on, on a Fri-, I'm sorry, on a Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then we want it to conclude at a local funeral home to say that this is not where we want the people to end up. We have gotten consent to be able to do so that they are at the funeral home. I have spoken to the mayor and I've also spoken to the chief of police, and they were cordially listening, and I appreciate that. And I'm here because I would like to be able to, if possible, to make that week so that this, that people won't think that it's just a, a prayer thing, but I would like to be able to get the whole city involved because it's our city. And we wanted to promote it, you know, with flyers, and we wanted our, the members of the councils to be aware of it and to also promote it. I have wanted our mayor and our chief of police to also be a part on that Saturday to say a speech to the people that will be there in order that they can let us know the importance of our, our streets and our communities being safe. And so, I came to you to ask you if you would assist us in promoting and allowing us to make that week to stop the violence and the deaths in Goldsboro and surrounding areas.
What are those dates?
The dates are the 5th to the 8th.
December 5th.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions from the council? If not, thank you, ma'am, lots of love. We have proclamation, home health care, hospice. I'll just leave that to the other proclamations and, oh, I think right on cue, that's good.
Pretty close, mayor.
Right on cue. They were waiting for us.
Are you doing that? Are they coming?
Next on the agenda is the Air Force Museum.
Mayor, council, I just want to take the opportunity to introduce to you Ms. Tricia Cook. She spoke briefly to the board during the work session about the work that the Vernon Johnson team has done with the Air Force Museum Citizen Committee. We have our consultants in town, they'll be hosting a public forum tomorrow here at City Hall, and I would just like for Tricia to give you a brief update of what we plan to cover at our community meeting tomorrow and invite our members of the community to come and hear more about the Air Force Museum project. Tricia, if you please.
Yes, your slides just. Good evening again.
Good evening.
And good evening to the public that's here tonight. Tomorrow morning, our museum planning team will present the plan that we have developed over the last six months with the help of the museum citizen committee here and our exploratory committee for adaptively reusing the building at the corner of Ash and Smith Streets and turning it into a dynamic aviation museum that showcases that proud connection Goldsboro has with the base and making it a landmark destination for travelers and residents as well. The process involved our doing a great deal of research with your community. We met with stakeholders, that is businessmen, educators, the people that have been thinking about this museum for the last couple of decades, and they were invaluable in giving us their opinions, advice, vision for the museum. We also talked with educators, veterans, pilots out at the base, and with the help of the city's website, we administered a large-scale survey, giving the community the chance to express their opinions about this museum. Their input also was very valuable. We feel that architecturally, you have a very sound building that almost speaks of a museum as it stands today. Inside, it is arranged in a very symmetrical fashion that will adapt itself very nicely to a first floor of highly interactive exhibits where children, adults, can come and have a hands-on experience with what it means to, to fly the aircraft that are here at the base, what it takes intellectually, physically, and we feel that's very important for children. And it's also an opportunity for teachers to extend the classroom into the museum environment where the curriculum can be tied to hands-on activities that the museum will provide. The museum will also give residents a chance to use it as a gathering space for community events, for rental events. We feel that we've been able to introduce all the components that a large-scale national museum might have, but appropriately sized for a regional museum. And we feel it offers a tremendous benefit to your community. We've visited Goldsboro some five times now, and each time we've become more endeared and associated with the people that we've met here and makes us proud as Americans that Seymour Johnson is safeguarding our national security. And it's a wonderful story to be told, not just of the, the two pilots who command a plane, but it's that ground crew that supports the missions. And it's a story about brave men and women. And it's also a story not just about the fourth wing, but about the refueling wing as well. So tomorrow, we will show our diagrams, our architectural concepts, our renderings of what the visitor experience will look like. We'll also talk about our capital budget for this museum and our operating budget as well. We have tried very hard to work within a financial framework that we think will work for Goldsboro. The price tag comes in at around $6 million. And two and a half million of that are for the base construction, to renovate the building, to upgrade its systems, to bring it all to what we call a moderate architectural grade. The exhibits, we feel, are the heart of the museum experience. And those, that carries a little higher price tag, and that's three and a half million dollars. But, you know, you're a community that looks very much to tourist income and revenue, and approximately 40% of the annual attendance, we project an annual attendance of about 29,000 people, 40% of that will come from your tourist market. And to bring tourists in, we feel we have to have an experience of a very high quality. And these exhibits can come at a cost, they're highly interactive, technologically up to date, and all that's gonna happen, all that exciting stuff is gonna happen on the first floor. But we haven't forgotten about the commemorative aspect of the museum, and that'll all happen upstairs, where it'll be more quiet, more contemplative, there'll be artifacts from the, the story that we tell, and people will have a chance upstairs to take in a more traditional museum setting. So we feel that with this dynamic downstairs and this contemplative upstairs, that we've kind of found the right balance for the programs. And tomorrow, people will also get a first glance at how we've transformed the exterior of the building with special lighting, a glass box that extends out onto Ash Street, and a plane on a stick that's majestically posed upward. We've really done our best to activate the facade of the building and keep it within what we think is a reasonable budget. Any questions for us? The rest of the team is here with me.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't think we have right now. I'd like to thank you and your team for doing an outstanding job for us.
Thank you, Mayor Kim.
What time? 10 o'clock? Where at?
Here at City Hall.
And that's Tuesday, the 20th of November. It is, but this may be airing, so we don't want to confuse people. It is Tuesday, November 20th, at 10 o'clock, City Hall, large conference room. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess now we go to the public hearing?
Jimmy Rowe is gonna carry us through our public hearing items, Mayor Kim.
Mayor of City Council, item E, Z1112, Trinity Daycare. The property is located on the west side of Lee Drive between East Ash Street and East Street. The property has a frontage of 98.25 feet and average depth of 190.5 feet and a total area of approximately 18,716.63 feet, square feet, or 1.43 acres. The present zoning classification is R12 residential. The proposed zoning classification is often institutional one. The subject property is shown here in the crosshatch area. The property here in the yellow colors are nine residential here and here. The property here is R12 residential. The property in the pink here is neighborhood business. The property shown here in the red is general business. This is the comprehensive land use plan which designates the property for existing residential uses. The property shown here in the red is designated for major retail uses. This is an aggregate photo of the on-site. This is the subject property crosshatch area. These are residential structures here. These are some commercial buildings across the street for storage uses. And these are photographs of the property in question. The property is occupied by a structure which was previously utilized as a daycare center. A condition of district has not been requested, therefore, no use for the property has to be specified. The requested often institutional one zoning district will permit churches, daycare centers, and other office-type uses with no retail sales. The recommendation is no action necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on December 3rd, 2012.
Thank you. Any questions from the council and Mr. Rowe? Thanks, Jimmy. This is a public hearing as Mr. Rowe just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against or comment, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anybody like to speak on this item? When you come forward, please give us your name and meal and address, please.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
My name is Addie Bryant. I reside at 110 Fulton Road, Dudley, North Carolina. My business is located right now presently at 308 South Slocom Street here in Goldsboro. The reason I am coming is to ask for this resident, this area, this building to be rezoned as a business. I have been in daycare business, I started in 2005 in my home with only eight children. In 2007, we relocated up to Goldsboro where I started out with provisional license, and now we are a four-star facility. This building only has a capacity of 26 children per shift. Right now, I have a waiting list of over 35 children. Today, as a matter of fact, I had to turn down more children because I do not have the space to, to give them the proper care that they need. As a matter of fact, the Children or Child Development Center on base is calling us wanting to place children in our facility, and we're having to turn those children down also. And we believe that with us moving into this, this will be a prime location for childcare centers because it is convenient for military personnel, civilian personnel, and will increase the value of the area. The rezoning of this building will help contribute to the beautification of the area, enhance the economic development in Goldsboro, Goldsboro, and bridge the social growth and with our children and community. I went into the community on November the 3rd and walked through with a petition, and I got 70% of the community in favor of me opening the building back up. We have, I have a staff, a qualified staff, they're certified in CPR, first aid, CIS. We have to stay up to date with all the state regulations that's required. We are inspected by sanitation. There's rules and guidelines that we have to go by. There's, you name from agency, we have to do this. Our goal is not just to reach the children, we reach out to the families also. We want to reach the family emotionally, socially, physically, in every area, in every aspects of their life so they can grow themselves as a family. A lot of my families are single-parent families. I even have families that the man is the head of the household, and they come to us as mentors, not just as educators, they come to us as mentors to help them on how to raise their children. And by doing this, we can refer them back to the partnership or to the Goldsboro pediatric, any area, we're connected, we have resources in our facility that we can relay the children back to. So your vote in rezoning this building will not only benefit just my staff and my business, but it will also benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Brown, one question for you. You said where you are now, you have 26 children, and you're at capacity, is that what?
We're only allowed, I'm only allowed 26 per shift. I have two shifts.
So this location would allow you to expand your business as I do?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, I think that's it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Again, if you'd give us your name and meal and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ebony Farrell. I reside at 252 West Area Road. I've been knowing Ms. Addie for the last five years. I met Ms. Addie four years ago with a long distance phone call from New York. She had the slightest idea that a little New Yorker had interested in having her child attend daycare in North Carolina. I had never allowed my child to attend daycare, so I didn't know what to expect, I honestly didn't, because my child was mostly with friends or family being taken care of. I had called several other daycares in North Carolina, but Trinity Daycare seemed the most suitable one for my child. Ms. Addie has helped me along the way of my journey as trying to become a better person and a mother, and she has also become a mentor as well. I didn't have a vehicle, she has helped me along with getting my child to and from daycare as well, to and from school. She helped me keep the faith and keep moving along with my daily life. Trinity Daycare has helped my child and has helped him with his learning development and social development. Ms. Addie is the kindest woman I have met. She's a very loving, caring, very involved, and hands-on when it comes to tending and taking care of your child. I have great respect for Ms. Addie and the other staff members, excuse me, of Trinity Daycare. I am glad I chose Trinity Daycare, not only is my eight-year-old attending, but my two-year-old as well. I would not have chosen another daycare center for my children to attend, no matter where I go, I don't think I would ever find loving and caring individuals as I did in Trinity Daycare. And I must say, Trinity Daycare has helped me along the way personally and with my kids as well.
Thank you. I think she's made a favorable impression on you.
Well, she really has. And I was in New York calling around before I had moved back down, trying to find daycare to get everything situated with my children, well, with my child at the time, and she was the go.
Fantastic.
So when I came back, I just headed straight to Ms. Addie on the gateway.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a good evening.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If there's nobody else, we will close this public hearing and we will go to our next.
Item F, Z1212, James Dolan Baker. The property is located on the south side of US 70, US 70 West between I-795 and US-117 Bypass. The property has a frontage of 158 feet and average depth of approximately 525.07 feet, a total area of 106,1,049 square feet or 3.7 acres. The present zoning classification is R6 residential and general business. The proposed zoning classification is general business condition of district to limit the use of the property to sales and outdoor storage or site and landscape plans approved prior to development. The subject property is shown here in the crosshatch area. This is Highway 70 West that runs here. This is 117 Bypass that's located here. The property is shown here in the red color, it's on general business. The property is here in the pink is highway business. The property here in the yellow colors are 16 residential and R16 residential here. The comprehensive land use plan designates this property, well, this property here for existing residential. The property is here shown in the purple for industrial uses, and the property is shown here in the pink color for commercial development. This is already photographed of the site. This is the existing business here, it's located right here, and these are photographs of the property. This is the existing business. The applicant has requested the general business condition of district to limit the use of the property to sales and outdoor storage with site and landscape plans approved prior to development. A preliminary plan has been submitted which shows the existing Baker Piper Supply Business on the adjacent lot not included within the rezoning request. The applicant proposes to store items associated with the business outside on the property to be rezoned. Site and landscape plans showing the location of the storage and screen will be required prior to development. A waiver of the site plan submission requirements at the time of rezoning is requested. The recommendation is no action necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meetings on December 3rd, 2012.
Thanks. Any questions from council, Jimmy? Thanks, Jimmy. Again, this is a public hearing as Ms. Rowe just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against or to make comments, we'd be glad to hear from you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I see no indications, so we will close this public hearing. And our hard-working planning commission, unless they want to sit in here and listen to us, they're excused.
Is not an elevator open there, is it?
No.
I might want to tell her, it has an elevator.
She's an elevator. Can't park the elevators, is it?
Want me to show? Item G, contiguous analyzing request, Best Property Incorporated. It's located on the southwest corner of Galvest Road and New Hope Road. The area is 6.5 through 9 acres. The city council at their public hearing, at their meeting on October 15, 2012, scheduled a public hearing for the proposed analyzing of the subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Pursuant to GS 168-31, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed be annexed as well as residence of the municipality shall be given an opportunity to be heard on proposed analyzing. If the city, if the council determines that proposed analyzing meets all the requirements of GS 168-31, it has the authority to adopt an analyzing ordinance. Attached is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other departments concerning the subject analyzing, analyzing area. The area being considered for analyzing is located on the southwest corner of Galvest Road and New Hope Road. It's status covered in vaca, there is no The site is currently vacant, there is no resident population. The area is six point five through nine acres. The property is currently zoned neighborhood business. This is the subject property shown here in the red crosshairs color. Um, this is West New Hope Road that's located here. This is Calabas Road that's located here. The area is adjacent and contiguous to the city boundaries. The proposed annexation area boundary abuts existence limits longest northern boundary. Property protection for the property request for annexation will be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. Police protection to the subject property can be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. The city will be able to provide commercial refuse service to the site upon request. Half of the right-of-way of Calabas Road in front of the subject property has been included within the submitted description. The entire right-of-way of the New Hope Road in front of the subject property has also been included. Both Galveston Road and New Hope Road are maintained by the state. City water and sewer service is available to serve the subject property. Estimated revenues for this property is eight hundred fifty dollars and seven cents. The estimated proportion of share accounted with the volunteer fire department debt as a result of annexation is currently unknown. If this property is annexed into the city, um, it would be added to District Six if the council decides that. Your recommendation is by motion after the public hearing, adopt the attached ordinance annexed Best Properties Incorporated site effective November thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Any questions from council? Here it is. This is our final public hearing of the evening. Anyone who would like to speak to this issue as just described by Ms. Farrell? We'd be glad to hear from you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I don't see anyone, so we will close this public hearing, and we do have a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contiguous annexation of the Best Properties on date November thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with an aye. Aye, opposing? Motion's carried. Consent agenda.
Uh, mayor and council, on the consent agenda, you have items H through O. Again, items H through O.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda. Any questions? No comment? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
And President Al?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Mel?
Yes.
Housemember Rice?
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. Items requiring individual action, we have none?
None this evening, ma'am.
City managers' report.
Um, mayor, I'd mention two things. One, lights up downtown November twentieth, so Tuesday evening, five to seven. Would certainly encourage everybody to attend. It ought to be a nice event as in past years. And again, this year, we'll be at City Hall on our newly reopened Center Street, so we would encourage people to come out and, and share that event with us from five to seven on November twentieth. And then secondly, I would just wish, uh, uh, everyone a happy Thanksgivens if that is the week we're running into and ask people to be safe in their journeys and look forward to seeing them when they return. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to the mayor and council members' report. I have a resolution here that I need to read, we need to adopt. Resolution, express an appreciation for services rendered by Jimmy Clint Hales Junior as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than nine years. Whereas Jimmy Clint Hales Junior retires on November thirtieth, two thousand and twelve as a police officer in the police department of the city of Goldsboro with more than nine years' service. Whereas Clint began his career on September tenth, two thousand and three, as a police officer with the police department, where he has served until his retirement. And whereas Clint has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous from behalf of themselves, the other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro are expressing to Jimmy Clint Hales Junior their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that, one, we express to Jimmy Clint Hales Junior our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Clint our veridus wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this nineteenth day of November, two thousand and twelve. I move for adoption of this resolution. Second. We have a second. Any further discussion? No discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known with an aye. Aye, opposing? Motion's carried. I don't see, uh, Jeff, we don't have Clint here. Okay. Well, I wanted to thank him personally for his, he's had tough years. He was, uh, had an incident that, uh, he's lucky to be alive. And I guess he, uh, he got that from his dad, who retired with more than thirty, thirty-five years or so. Jimmy, that seemed like that long ago, but, uh, the Hales, the Junior and the Senior, we appreciate their service. Thank you. And I have Employ the Veteran Week, but it's a little late. It was supposed to have been last week, but the message is still good, and I think I need to, to read this. Proclamation, Employ a Veteran Week. Whereas veterans in North Carolina, and more specifically in Golds, in the city of Goldsboro, represent a strong and productive part of the workforce. And whereas Goldsboro and the surrounding community have prospered with the help of veterans who have served their country during peace and war and have kept our democracy and way of life secure. Whereas it is not only proper, but in our best public and economic interest, to take advantage of these tremendous resources by providing employment opportunities to our veterans already in the workforce and to the number of veterans who are presently leaving the military and choosing to remain in our community. Whereas veterans enhance our workforce with their experience and skills and deserve special consideration for employment. This proclamation was supposed to have been last week, but for some reason, we're getting it now, and it's belated, but you get the message. We have a lot of good veterans, and we need to make sure that we do everything we can to keep them employed and to keep them here in Goldsboro. Another proclamation, Home Care and Hospice Month. Whereas home care and hospital services provided for the individual health and social needs across continuum of life, compassionate care which serves expected mothers, infants, children, adults, the disabled, and elderly, and also provide love, comfort, and support at the end of life. And whereas home care and hospice agencies provided for the health and social needs of numerous Goldsboro citizens in their homes last year. And whereas home care and hospital services enable Goldsboro citizens to receive quality health and social service in their homes surrounded by family and friends. And whereas home and hospital services strengthen the family bond and support families as they care for their loved ones at home, lessening the caregivers burnout and unnecessary placement in more costly institutional settings. And whereas home care and hospital ser, service build upon a strong and tradition of care and compassion, striving to keep families together while preserving and individual's independence and dignity in the setting of their choice, home. Whereas Beverly East Purdue, governor of the state of North Carolina, has proclaimed November two thousand and twelve as Home Care and Hospice Month in North Carolina and commended set-up stations to citizens of the state of North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Alfonso King, the other city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and twelve as Home Care and Hospice Month in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and commend this service to our citizens. The individuals who, uh, run this program and support it were supposed to come tonight, but they couldn't, but I, and pick this up. But I do, uh, thank them, and we all should thank them for the tremendous service they provide our country and wish them well. Okay.
My turn?
Your turn.
Two things, Mr. Mayor. One, I guess as most people figured out by now, that we have had an election since last time we met, and I would just like to take a minute to comment on it, at least at the local level. And what I'd like to do first is just to, um, to thank Commissioner Bud Gray, Sandra McCullough, and Jack Bass for their years of dedicated service to our county. Uh, we had an excellent working relationship with these folks, and they represented the county of Wayne with great, great distinction, and we're gonna miss them, so I want to thank them. In the same breath, I'd also like just to welcome and congratulate the commissioners-elect of Wayne Acock, Joe Daughtry, and Bill Pate. It's my hope that we can develop the same good working relationship with them, and I think, given time, we'll do that. And I would even like to suggest that maybe when things calm down, if it's the first of the year, we try to set up some type of joint meeting with them, just to see how we can help with each other and work with each other. So I'll just put that out there. And then secondly, I just want to wish everyone, um, a happy Thanksgiving, and if you would, just remember somebody who's maybe less fortunate than you. We need to try to help everybody so everybody gets something to eat on Thanksgiving. So just want to have everybody have a safe Thanksgiving.
That's a good idea. Get something to eat. Is that it?
That's it.
Gene?
Just a happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just would like to say we've lost another icon and entrepreneur in our community, Civil Scott. Member of Scott family is in Booth District. It's the second one in the last month that we've lost. And, uh, I also would like to say that our prayers would be with her family. And I wish everybody to a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. Thank you.
Yeah? Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to wish everyone a, um, happy Thanksgiving, and remember those whom are less fortunate than we are. You may have a neighbor that's less fortunate, that does not even have a meal for Thanksgiving. And if we're preparing a meal, it would be mighty nice to fix a meal and carry it over to the neighbor or extend an invitation to the neighbor to come over to your home and eat Thanksgiving with you. Uh, the second thing is, um, Saturday night, I had the opportunity to go to, um, the first St. Augustine College banquet, held at, uh, at Walnut Creek, and it was very, very nice. This year, they plan on doing it every year now, but this year was in dedication, uh, and in memory of Neil Stitt, who graduated from, uh, St. Aug. I'm not, yes, from St. Aug. And the president of St. Aug came down and, um, was the guest speaker, and they brought a crowd of faculty with them down. And it was, it just showed you how respected Neil Stitt was across, across the state. And, um, I was very impressed with the program. It was a very good program, very professionally handled. My hat's off to them, and, uh, I look forward to going next year. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Bill?
Well, I actually have two things. And on the nights of the eighth and ninth of this month, the Madison Avenue Baptist Church hosted a meritorious, uh, uh, meal for the families of our police and also for them. And it was on two nights. The reason they did it two nights is so everybody could get there. And it was an excellent affair. And I will tell you that we have so much to be proud of. You see those, and they all look sharp in their uniforms. They all received numerous awards, awards that are hard to get, and also her four Medal of Valor citations read. And it just made me proud of the Goldsboro police, and it made me proud that somebody else recognized something for them and for their families. And, um, Madison Avenue Baptist should be congratulated, and also all those people who received those awards. Thank you.
Well done. It was a beautiful ceremony and turned out extremely well, and the recipients really deserved the recognition they got. Good job. Our new chief thought of that, I'm sure. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everyone on this council has already reiterated the fact that this is the season of giving, and let's, as we gather with family and friends over the upcoming holidays, let's remember those who are less fortunate. But I would also ask that we remember the men and women who are in uniform, serving, uh, across seas and across different lands right now, who will not be able to be with their family and friends, and that we say a prayer for them at our dinner tables as we're sitting with our, our loved ones. Uh, as the city manager said, our lights up is tomorrow, so I would encourage all families come out, mom, dad, bring your kids, and get a picture with Santa and the Grinch. They'll be on hand as well.
And the Grinch?
The Grinch, yeah, and get a picture with, yeah, everybody, the mayor. But the Grinch will be there, dancing with, and with bells on and all that good stuff.
If the Grinch is gonna be there, I think everyone should be there.
Everyone should come out if the Grinch is gonna be there. There you go. And lastly, uh, also the Christmas parade coming up the first weekend in December before we meet again. Certainly like to remind everybody of that. Another big event. So happy holidays, keep family first, and, uh, be safe.
Thank you.
My question, Mr. Mayor, would it be snowy?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure about that snow thing.
We'll have a little snow.
If Tosh says it will be snowy, it will be snowy. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, send my condolences and my family condolences to Civil Scott. Uh, Civil and my wife were extremely close. They belong to the same church, and, uh, Civil has had some problems who evolved, and, um, she's served our community extremely well. But she's been ill. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but she's been ill for quite a while, but she's, she was tough. She fought it.
My favorite story about her is anytime you go in there, she manually adds everything on that ticket, and she doesn't miss it. I mean, she does, she man, I'm like, she's like, my daddy taught me this, it's the only way I know.
You know?
And I was in there a week ago, and her son's in there doing the same thing.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad he is because she believed in that very, very strongly, and she didn't want anybody to do that but her.
She, she was good at it.
She, and it, it's in her DNA, and I'm glad that her son is doing it just the way.
He's carrying on doing a fine job.
Fantastic. Uh, lights up tomorrow, tomorrow night, and I've been talking to a lot of classes and young kids, and I've told them to just bug their parents and make sure they bring them out here tomorrow. It, uh, lights up. And, uh, if, young kids, if you're out there watching me tonight and you hear me, we're gonna have lights up downtown tomorrow, and it's a lot of fun, and you make your parents or somebody bring you, you'll enjoy it. And, uh, well, I just want to also, uh, wish everyone the best Thanksgiving ever. Eat a lot and think about those people who don't have much to eat and eat a little more. If there's nothing else to come before us, we stand to be...